...and 20 minutes late, we apologize for our delay, but we are upstairs. And may we have roll call for the council first.
Mayor Colby?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Ardeno?
Here.
Councilman Bosco?
Here.
Councilman Crowley?
Here.
Councilman Edgar?
Here.
Councilman Kessler?
Here.
Councilman Lee?
Here.
Councilman Stokes?
Here.
Ten to be.
It should be at the back.
And do you have the roll for the Board of Education?
Yes. Board member Kevin Feely?
Absent.
Vincent Grady?
Here.
Joyce Hall?
Here.
Peter Genitis?
Here.
Tino LeBlanc?
She's absent.
Timothy Rettle?
Here.
Jennifer Rancourt?
She's absent.
Sarah?
Here.
And Donna Stood?
Here.
We have five board members present here.
Okay. Thank you, Jeanette. Um, first item on our agenda is Board of Education budget presentation, so I'll turn it over to Chairman Neville. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We didn't mind waiting. Maybe just at length of time we use some more favorable, look at our budget more favorably as we go along.
What's more, Dr.?
Didn't work, huh? It was a good shot, anyway. We'd like to thank you for having us here tonight to present the Board's 2013 budget request. The last few days, Dr. Schuman and Chris Dreszek and myself, along with the central office staff, put together this presentation, which Dr. Schuman's going to present to you tonight. So briefly take you through the process we went through, describe the district's needs and goals. We'll also discuss some of the uncertainties that we have in the budget numbers and our concerns, particularly about unfunded mandates and things that we just don't know about because of the budget process in Hartford at this point in time. And as always, at the end, we'll welcome and answer any questions you have. I believe everybody should have a presentation handout you can follow along with and take some notes, and we hope the document we presented to you last Thursday, Friday, whenever you got it, is satisfactory and gave you the information you need. If you need anything else, okay, Phil Lee got to us this weekend or Friday, I think, and we were able to correct something there and get back to him right away, we would be happy to do that. We want you to have correct information. Any questions you have, please get to us. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Schuman to take you through our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Enfield Public Schools is a mission-driven school system, and part of that mission reads to provide a safe, nurturing, and academically challenging learning environment. And as you know, for the last hour and a half, safety is a primary concern of ours in terms of making our schools a safe place for our students to come learn. And that is an area of expertise now that we're counting on some others outside of our, outside of the Board of Education. The Chief of Police, the Department of Public Safety, and all the elected officials in town are working very hard to make sure we have a safe environment. We're a little more skilled in the nurturing and academically challenging area. We work very hard to make sure our students get a wonderful education. Our goal is to take the little learners you see on the left and turn them into proud school graduates that you see on the right. And with a good school system, we send those graduates out to be well-educated, productive members of society. Our budget is based on the Board of Education priorities, which were established a year or so ago. They are to implement the Common Core state standards. To, at that point, was to work on a high school consolidation plan and how to move that forward, create a plan for full-day kindergarten, expand the capacity and use of our data, fully integrate the technology plan with professional development, engage in activities with the Town Council, collaborations, and to reinstate and expand opportunities for sports at the middle school. In addition to that, the Board has six goals: to establish a rigorous curriculum, to work forward the high school consolidation, to implement full-day kindergarten, expand our data use capacity, to put a new educator evaluation plan in, which is a state mandate which is coming to us, and to work on collaborative initiatives. The budget you're going to see tonight addresses all but two things in the Board's priorities and its goals, and you can see them with the green checkmark. So it's a broad-based budget based on the needs of the district and measured by the goals and the Board priorities. The process began at the classroom level with our building administrators working with teachers to identify their needs. They identified quite a few needs. As a matter of fact, they identified seventy, almost $72 million worth of needs. And we look at the second row here. Our budget for this year is $63,141,355. The identified needs that came out of our buildings was $8 million over that, or a budget increase of 13.9 percent. As we went around town in the fall, we conducted 17 listen-and-learn sessions with over 1,000 people attending. And they told us what they liked, they told us what they disliked, and they told us what they wanted to see. And we put it together in our listen-and-learn report, which you see the copy right there. We have a hard copy, it's also up on our website. So we used the information that we heard to put together the budget based on the stakeholders in this community and what they would like to see us accomplish. One of the things that's important to look at is our enrollment. And while our enrollment is declining, more importantly, it's shifting, and that's what this document, this graph shows. The green represents the number of Enfield students attending Enfield schools. The red represents the number of Enfield students attending technical and voag schools. And the gold up on top represents the number of Enfield students who go out to magnet schools. The cost to educate students in the red and the gold area is significantly more than the green. And so while we have a few less students, the cost is being shifted, and a lot of those dollars are being sent out of town. And so one of the things we have to try to work on is finding ways to attract those students to stay in town so that the green goes up, the gold and the red go down, and that will relate to a less of a cost per student. One of the things that, as Mr. Neville says, is coming out of Hartford is, we may very well be responsible for the cost of educating preschool students who elect to go to preschool outside of Enfield. And that, we were first charged with that, and then relieved of that expense, there's a good chance that the legislation going through will be responsible for that expense in next year's budget. Another area we looked to find out how we're doing is the NEA Association, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And right now, they come every 10 years to visit, they'll be back in 2017 to look at, hopefully, a brand-new Enfield High School. But it's important to know that Enfield High School is on warning. They're on warning for the standards on accreditation on curriculum and community resources for learning. The good news is, in our special progress report, response from the commission, they were pleased with a couple of things. One of the things they were pleased with is our budget process. And they were happy to find out that with our needs-based budget, we've identified and are correcting some of the allocations, things for sufficient textbook, instructional materials and supplies, so that's all included, and so we have satisfied to a great deal the commission's worries about the fact that we weren't funding our budget correctly and giving our students what they needed. So that's good news as we move forward. On January 8th, I presented a budget to the Board of Education. I had taken the $71 or $72 million of requests, removed and cut $5 million, brought it down to $69,918,000, which was a 5.98 percent increase, and passed it on to the Board for their work. Some of the areas that you should be aware of in that budget, first of all, up here, the IT services, which causes a 1.56 percent budget increase. As you all know, the budget was funded this year at $857,000, with $772,000 relieved because of a one-time expenditure of funds that were available. Those funds are not available in next year's budget, so those funds, plus the additional increases, is causing a $974,000 increase in IT for next year for the Board side, and that's a 1.56 percent increase in the Board's overall budget. By the time I presented the budget, that we had a 1.4 percent increase in new positions. We had asked for seven elementary school assistant principals, mainly because of the state mandate for the new evaluation plan, but also to provide some assistance to our elementary principals so they could spend less time being managers and more time being educational leaders in their buildings. We had also shown in here, this, the 1.36 percent in existing salaries. We had 1.06 percent in special education, a small increase of .31 percent in benefits, .35 percent in instructional supplies, and then everything else that was involved in the budget equaled .18. And the Board had, I presented a notion to the Board where I thought we could save $150,000 at the end of this year, and because of the 1 percent carryover, we could carry that money forward and then utilize it in next year's budget, so it allowed us to reduce the budget by .24 percent. Board of Education began its work, and they reduced the budget another $1.2 million, or a 1.2 percent reduction. They took the funds from the elementary school assistant principals. The reason they were able to do that was, we received information from the state that we could partially implement the new mandate. We didn't have to do the new evaluation plan with all of our teachers, we could do it with half of our teachers in one-third of our schools. So we've elected to do it at JFK and the two high schools, which means we don't have to put that burden on the elementary schools next year. The year after, we will have to, so this request and this mandate will resurface a year from now. The other place we took funds was from the computer adaptive testing. In a year from now, all of our students are going to be taking their annual national assessments online, and we thought it would be a good idea to purchase a program which would allow us for our students to experience that. Through the work of our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. McKernan, we've been able to become part of the pilot. We're actually going to get a chance to test out the materials a year ahead of time that they're going to use, and therefore, because we're part of the pilot, even though it's a pretty good burden on our schools scheduling it, we're confident our Chief Information Officer, Guy Barasa, can get that done, and that we'll be able to give our students the opportunity to experience this, we won't have to spend the money. We reduced the salary account by $240,000. On February 19th, the Board was aware of retirements that I was not aware of on January 8th. The faculty hasn't until February 11th and notify us if they want to take a retirement. So we were able to, based on the retirements we knew at that time, reduce the Board, boost my budget, $240,000. And the Board left $250,591 cuts up to me to find areas where we could, if possible, reduce the budget through streamlining and efficiency, and that's how they wound up with their $1.263 million reduction. I'll talk more about that in a moment. So on February 19th, the Board approved a budget of $65,654,380, a 3.98 percent increase. If we take a look at where those funds are, notice existing, whoops, let's go back. Existing salaries are down at .98, we were able to take the $240,000 out, so that budget line item came down. New positions, .38, I can't see too well without my glasses, and that's 3.6, I'm sorry, thank you. And what's left in new positions are the three new teaching positions for kindergarten, I'll explain that to you in a few moments, and some opportunities to expand our clerical support. The IT services, we've talked about, it's still up at 1.56. The special education is still at 1.06, and we'll take a closer look at that. Benefits were able to be reduced because we don't have the new seven assistant principals. And up here in carryover, it's important to note that there's still $150,000 we're hoping to carry over, plus the $250,000 the Board has asked me to look for or make recommendations to, and that can come from streamlining and also come from some of the new initiatives we move forward. So that's going to allow the budget to be reduced by .63 percent. Look at the increase a different way. We have fixed costs. We know that the IT situation is a 1.56 percent increase. We know that special education is a 1.06 percent increase. Existing salaries are going up .98 percent. The benefits are going up .14 percent. And everything else, the transportation, insurances and things like that are going up .8 percent, .18 percent, excuse me. Some of the new initiatives we have in place. To implement full-day kindergarten, we need three full-time teachers and some supplies, that's going to cost .2 percent. So we have some teaching and learning initiatives, which I'll cover in a moment, at .33 percent. The expansion of our summer clerical support, so that our 10-month secretaries are in the building for 12 months, making sure there's someone operating the switch at the door and giving extra support to our principals, is .16 percent. The carryover and the superintendent reductions would reduce the budget .63 percent. So our fixed costs. Fixed costs equal 3.92 percent. The new initiatives we'd like to put in place are .69 percent. We take out the reductions, we're hoping to find, and again, some of those reductions are going to come probably from the new initiatives area unless we can find some streamlining to get it from someplace else. Brings our budget total request to 3.98 percent. We look at the special education account. Currently in Enfield, 810 students are receiving special education services through their IEPs or individual education plans. Another 200 students are receiving services through their 504 plans. We have 38 outplaced students. 20 of those students are outplaced by the local agency, by our Board of Education. 16 of those, we've made decisions on our own that we thought that was the best placement for them. Four, we thought, should stay in district, however, when they went to a arbitration hearing, the arbitrators ruled that the students had to be placed outside. The tuition for those 20 students is going up $320,000 next year. We have 18 students who are outplaced by state agencies. We have no control over that. The tuition for those students is going up $258,000. And we have 49 special education students attending magnet schools. When the student attends a magnet school, though, they bill us for special services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, et cetera. The cost for those things are going up about $32,000. So this is the bulk of the $610,000 of the increases in the special education side of our budget. Look at some of the other initiatives. Keeping in mind here that there still has to be $250,000 of reductions that the Board left on the table for us to locate. The Board has removed the assistant principals, removed the computer-assisted testing, we still have the 12-month secretaries, it's almost $70,000. Over the last two years, the Board has been able to put middle school sports back. Last year, they put in $50,000, which we've carried forward to keep the sports that are currently in existence, and we've added $9,700 to add three new sports. We have full-day kindergarten at $224,000. We'd like to expand our iPad use, $100,000. We're going to get into these in a little bit further down the line here. We have a writing program we need to put in place for $75,000, a reading program for $25,000, a data warehouse, which is going to be required under the evaluation plan, which I'll talk about shortly, for $24,000, an online professional development lab, and again, another part of the teacher evaluation plan, and the opportunity for our students to access 1,800 new literature titles online, $21,000. So the new initiatives total $647,000 in next year's budget. Look at the full-day kindergarten initiative. This was something that we heard loud and clear over the course of our listen-and-learn sessions that people wanted. It requires, and Mr. Dreszek and the principals did a wonderful job identifying how we're going to be able to do it. At first, they thought, to keep our class sizes where we enjoy them now in the middle teens, it would be 11 teachers. We're going to go to a plan with eight teachers involved, and although the class sizes will go from mid to high teens up to 20 and 21, we still feel 20 and 21 is a very operational number, a number we can work with, especially given the tremendous benefits of full-day kindergarten. How are we going to get eight teachers? Well, a lot of this links to reallocation of current staff. We have, we reallocate two primary-level teachers, reallocate one middle-level, intermediate-level teacher, and we reallocate some of our academic support teachers to create five of those positions. We're able to find five positions internally and still not push our class sizes too far off the charts. We need three new additional teachers in order to make it work. So we have to keep what we have, we have to reallocate five, and we need three additional ones to make it work. We take a look at this map to show you where full-day kindergarten is. Anything in the green, these towns right here and down below here, have, currently have full-day kindergarten in place, and some of them have had it in place for over 10 years. The two towns in yellow, Ellington and Talon, are not going to have it in their budget next year, but they have already planned for it for the year after. And the cream-colored towns, for the rest of them in here, including Enfield, have got it in their budget as we speak right now for next year. So these towns in cream hope to have it in place next year, the towns in green already do have it in place. Currently, 62 percent of all public schools in the state of Connecticut have full-day kindergarten. When you add in the private schools and the magnet schools, 74 percent of all schools in the state of Connecticut have full-day kindergarten. So we have heard this loud and clear from our community, and statewide is becoming a trend of what communities are doing. Take a quick look at our teaching and learning initiatives. We have an opportunity here to meet the Common Core state standards, which has been adopted by the state of Connecticut and 47 other states across the country. This is coming to us. Our students are going to be required to meet a different set of standards to graduate from high school. In order to build the capacity in our staff to do that, we need some new programs. The first one is the Great Books Program. It's a new methodology for teaching reading in grades two through eight. We've identified weakness in our writing program from our writing scores, so we're going to put a new K-8 writing program in place district-wide. And we talked about the E-reader Program, giving our students access to online literature titles. Last year, we were able to purchase 300 iPads. This year, with $100,000, we can purchase another 200, so that we can expand the number of iPads we have in the hands of our students. And the bottom two have to do with the mandate from the state of Connecticut requiring us to have a new evaluation plan linked to student performance. This is going to help us develop the skills that we have to have, and part of that new plan talks about the ways in which we have to provide professional development to our teachers. And it has to be continuous, it has to be ongoing, and it has to be job embedded. So the opportunities that we've been doing before, the one-day lectures and things like that, will be part of that, but we must have a job embedded, continuous and ongoing part of that plan. We propose to do that through this online professional development lab. In the data warehousing system, the new performance indices are going to be based on student performance. And the district will get performance indices and targets we have to meet, the schools will have performance indices, and teachers will have individual performance indices. These indices will come from data submitted to the state from a data warehouse, so we're going to have to have a way to aggregate our data and then disaggregate our data so that we can send it to the state so it can be used to do this work and to meet their requirements. So those are the new initiatives we have for teaching and learning. Last week, in our Governance Council meeting, the mayor, the town manager, the board chair, myself, man, we talked about the capital improvements and things that we'd like to do around the buildings. The manager has included some in his budget, we'll talk about those in a second, but first, the Autism Spectrum Disorder Program, which will now be going over to JFK. Mr. Dreszek, again, spent a lot of time in our buildings looking around, and they found a way to get that done with our own crew over the summer, it is significant cost savings. So that'll happen over the summer, we should be ready for the fall to have those children come up and take part in that program. As you know, a couple of our playgrounds were closed down last year because they didn't meet the safety standards. We've now gone through and reviewed all of those playgrounds, we've got a list of things we need to take care of and maintain. The manager has been able to address some of those in his budget, understanding that we can't do it all at once, but it'll be an ongoing process as we work through it, and we're satisfied that the playgrounds are going to be safe, and they'll be maintained well so that our students can utilize them. And safety and security continues to be a priority, you just spent, we're talking about it, our committee meets every Wednesday morning, and we've got a lot of work to continue to do. We've taken a giant first step in getting some things in place, but we're going to continue to work to make sure that our schools are safe and secure and good places for our students to come every day and our staff to be safe. In terms of the budget key points, this budget impacts the entire community, we understand that. The budget recognizes the desire of the community to maintain a high-quality school district with limited economic resources. We also understand that families make decisions based on the quality and reputation of the school system. And this budget addresses the critical needs of our programs and across our district. Some of the major provisions. We're able to maintain all our current programs and staffing at this percentage increase. We're able to provide full-day kindergarten. We're able to provide new reading and writing programs to help us implement the Common Core state standards. We're able to implement new technologies, access to 1,800 new literature titles, we established the required data warehouse, we can move forward our IPAC consortium, we're going to triple our internet bandwidth from 100 megabytes to 300 megabytes, and we're able to add three new sports teams at John F. Kennedy Middle School. So we're able to do quite a bit with not a whole lot of money for an increase. So we thank you for your time, and as Mr. Neville said, we're ready to answer some questions tonight, and we're certainly ready to answer any questions as you move forward over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be of your service any way we can. Great. Thank you, Dr. Schuman. Anyone else from the Board? Any comments before we go into council questions? Anyone from the Board? No? Right into the questions. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Edgar?
I have a question on magnet schools. A student goes to a magnet school and stays there two, three months, then decides to come back. Are we still liable for the entire cost?
If they come back before October 1st, we are not. If they come back after October 1st, we are.
I've been wondering about that for quite a while.
That's the rule right now.
Because it shows a big difference in your cost if you have to pay an entire year and you don't get a full-day cost pass.
All set, Red?
Yeah.
Thank you, Red. Tom?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Question I had, and I'm sure I'll have many in the upcoming weeks, but the first one that jumps out at me, and I just want a little better understanding. The IT compared to how it worked and how it was cost-shared from last year, from the town to the schools, and how your proposal this year spends that money in addition to last year. So I'm trying to get a handle on it, doesn't really address the breakdown. Last year, we spent, they spent X amount of dollars that we billed them, so to speak. Compare that to this increase and what we're getting for the amount of money that's different from last year to this year.
If you don't mind.
There, I believe- I like that you knew this because I wasn't here last year.
Well, I believe when he's talking about the percentage increase, he's looking at what was, not that there's a 1.6 percent increase overall in the budget, but the impact on their budget because of not only the, I believe, $800,000 that council authorized from the savings to go towards that, but as part of the budget process, council, I think, put another $300,000 or $400,000 towards the IT contribution as well. So I believe when they're talking about that increase, it's not the increase in the overall budget itself, it's the difference between what they had to pay last year versus what they'd have to pay this year, because those one-time monies aren't going to be there.
So as a true increase, what do you see the difference between?
I don't even remember-
You took that number out of it, I guess.
About .5, I think.
$974,000 is the difference, would be the difference in line items from last year to this year.
About $100,000.
I believe the total increase is 1.3 or 1.4 percent from what was actually spent last year. Again, remember, it was two different sources of revenue is how you have to look at that, and that's where the difference is coming from, at least you've got part of the budget. There was a different source of revenue, namely the cost savings that Board of Education accrued that paid for a significant portion of our IT costs last year. So what you're actually seeing of the actual cost is only about a 1 percent, a 1.3 percent increase, I believe is the number.
Thank you.
All set? Questions, comments?
Oh, Scott, I'm sorry, one more?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I had it written down, too. All-day kindergarten. I'm a huge fan of it, and I want to make sure that I get this out right now. Whatever happens, at the end of the day, whatever the number is that we come to agreement on, that all-day kindergarten stays a priority. From what I understand, there's a couple of numbers floating around, it can be done as inexpensively, it's about $150,000 up to the number that I saw on here, two and a quarter, I believe it was. I want to make sure that all-day kindergarten gets done.
I think all-day kindergarten's a priority for us, and I sense from hearing all of you folks, it's the same thing. The issue is strictly dollars, okay? And where we are right now, and you heard us, Dr. Schuman talked about, there's some, we don't have a choice. We have the data warehouse, we have to provide a special education, the IED, I don't know that we have to do. You know, we presented the budget as it was approved by the Board, 3.98. I know the town manager has taken a slice at it in terms of, you know, his presentation, and we certainly understand that. But when you get down to those kinds of numbers, we're talking personnel, period, there's no place else to go there. We want all-day kindergarten. That's a non-issue, that's like top of the heap here in terms of for her.
So let me ask you this, Chairman. If it came to, let's say, end of the day, you had to lay off four teachers to pay for full-day kindergarten, you would pay for full-day kindergarten using that route if you had no other choice?
I think it depended whether we, if I had to lay off four special ed teachers, it wouldn't happen because that's mandated, okay? Okay, it depends on whether it's also going, it depends on which those teachers are. It's not as simple as laying off four teachers.
No, no, it would be up to you, but I'm just asking- No, no, it would be up to you, but I'm just asking the question that if given that, if given that, where would we go?
My priority would be to have all-day kindergarten, if we could do, okay? No, I know what you're talking about, Tom. What I'm talking about, going a little bit deeper into the numbers here, in terms of what would be the impact off certain cuts in the budget. We're sitting here at a 3.98% budget, okay, request. Okay, I think probably better to talk about what happens if that goes to 3.5, 3, 2.5.
Well, I take the reverse on it. I think that basically, if I said to you, if I said to you, "It's going to cost you one extra kid in a class across elementary school."
If you told me that, I'd say, "Go with it."
Okay.
If you told me it's going to get up to 24, 25, maybe, then I'm going to sit down and say, "We've got to talk," because that's another whole issue. It's, you're asking a simple question, but it's not a simple question. It doesn't have a simple answer unless we look at a little.
Okay.
I'd be happy to go deeper with you.
I'm good.
I don't want to get into that. If you want to jump into that, feel free.
I just wanted to add something to that. But I think the way we got to figure out we have what the kindergarten fund, correct, Mr. Dreszek, is that he's hoping on the personnel that we have to do those moving around to do the full-day kindergarten without hiring, with only hiring three teachers. He's moving some teachers around to get this accomplished. So if we lay off teachers or lose teachers, we might not be able to do that finagle if I'm right in saying that.
Yeah, the plan is linked to creating eight new kindergarten teachers, five internally, three from outside. And if we lose a significant number of teachers internally, we may not have the ones we need to reallocate to the kindergarten. So that would be a, you know, it'd be an interesting puzzle to try and piece that together.
All set? Thank you, Tom. Tom?
Yeah, I also support the full-day kindergarten, and I see where you're coming from. You're taking, finding three teachers that you have now. You're already increasing class sizes. Any more layoffs, again, will bring you over that, put you into that very uncomfortable level with class sizes. So it's kind of a, I see it as a huge trade-off, what you're doing for us here, trying to find the teachers we have and yet not increase the school size classes where they're not manageable. I had a question on, also with the Great Books, Great Books and the Writing Program. Could you elaborate a little bit on what those programs are?
Yes, certainly. I can do a little bit on that. Our chief academic officer can certainly get you out and get a write-up on those things. The Writing Program is a full-blown writing program from kindergarten through grade eight with a full curriculum that gets implemented to teach our students how to write better writing practice into the classroom. So that's a student hands-on curriculum that we'd be putting in. Our test scores in writing show us that we really do need to address that. Great Books is a methodology for teachers to teach reading. We had a little demonstration of this, but really is professional development to a great degree on how to teach reading to students, how the questioning techniques, how to work through text with students, how to ask complex questions. The simplest thing, I think, is that we learned in one of the definitions, it's much more complex than this, but for years, we were, a student, a teacher would ask a question, a student would give a response, and we would say, "That's a great answer, Mr. Arnone. Does anybody else have an answer?" And we've been deep, now we're finding out that that's not the best thing to do. We're supposed to let, you know, the mayor say to you, "Gee, I never thought of that. That's something I can do," versus me as a teacher validating you, that tells everybody else, "Well, if I've got another idea and the teacher thinks that he's right, I'm not going to put my idea on the table." So that whole notion of making it more student-centered, our teachers haven't been trained in that. They don't know how to do that. And so we wanted to bring in a program that will help them learn those skills so they can teach reading better at younger ages.
And also teach them how to, really, what we do every day, talk to each other.
Exactly.
And take other people's opinions, and I think that's a great, great idea. Now, with the Writing Program, that's creative writing mostly.
Be creative, persuasive, persuasive, be expository, all the way up through the different levels as they get up to grade eight.
Great. Thank you.
So it sounds like you're advocating that all students come to a council or more people.
Absolutely.
We can learn.
We teach civics as well.
But they're also encouraged to say, "I don't agree with Councilman Arnone, and I think it should be this."
Or, "I agree."
Or, "Yeah." Most of the time, we agree, but that was good. Next is Ken.
First, the pilot money, the 3.9% or 9.8% increase you're asking for, is that including the $1,200,000 from pilot that the state's taken from the town side, given it to the board, or is that an addition to that?
No.
That's, it's.
No, it's just.
That would be, the 1.2 million would be, is Matt's budget, so that's.
So that would be part of funding this 3.9%.
Correct.
Okay. The point is, I mean, even though the state's giving it to you, we still have to make up for it on the town side. So right off the bat, we're $1,200,000 upside down. I guess my question is more so along with what Tom Kessler said. I mean, full-day kindergarten, it's not up to it, so it doesn't matter what my personal opinion is, but I would just hate, I know the community is pretty strong on it, I've heard it myself, and I would just hate to see that if we take the 3.98 and make it 3% or 2% or keep it at 3.5%, the first thing that's going to get cut is that all-day kindergarten, because obviously that's going to make the people upset. And you go right to the council, they cut our budget $100,000. You know, so I would just want to, I would ask for a commitment that we all try to, you know, keep the sports, keep the all-day kindergarten if that's the priority of the community, and work together to find other ways to fund these programs, because 3.9 is just a high number. I mean, in this budget, and now we still don't know about the tax, the property tax with the cars, the unknown you were talking about, or Dr. Schuman, was we have just as many, if not more, and it's just, it's almost an impossible year to fund everything everybody wants, so.
Kenny, I agree with you. I don't have an issue with that. I mean, my wife's thrilled with full-day kindergarten, okay? I didn't go for full-day kindergarten, besides the fact that we live in a divorce, I can't deal with this, okay? But I also believe in it, okay? My kids went to full-day kindergarten, and they certainly benefited from it, especially believes in wholeheartedly. The problem is, it's not a simple question. Will we keep it? Is it the highest priority for us? Absolutely. I don't think there's anybody on the board that is not for it. I don't think there's anybody among you guys that's not for it. The question is, how do you do it? Are we going to do this to get people riled up? No, that's not what, that's not what we're about. Same thing with sports. I mean, I think we'd like to add more sports, or we would like to be adding more, like freshman sports and stuff like that. There's not even a question here. The question is, we're looking at a lean budget, and we're sitting down saying, "How do we do this?" And, you know, what's happening is, is that, you know, the stimulus stuff is catching up with us. I think that's a four- or five-year deal by the time you catch up with it. You know that, we talked about it last year. And we're also looking at saying, "How do we deal with unfunded mandates?" And we've called our state legislators, and they're all, they all agree with us, and they're down there trying to deal with that. And I think that may be one of the reasons why the seed stuff was put off, because we were able to take out that, what, $750,000, I think, right out of that. So we're interested in finding any savings we can. The problem is that these are interrelated. The last time I talked about full-day kindergarten, it was almost a million bucks to implement it. I mean, I commend Chris Dreszek. They worked out how we could do this, minimize the increase, I think by one, maybe two kids in a class size, but give them all-day kindergarten, or $240,000, you know, that's minimal. And I think we want to see if we can do that. But we've also got to maintain the other stuff. We can't sit down and say, "Okay, we're going to cut special ed," and it's a very, very high number, as you saw. We can't sit down and say, "We can't have data warehousing." We have to have that. It's not, they're not optional.
Understood.
So we need to look at it all together and say, "What is this stuff that's optional? What can you not do?" We don't have that many discretionary issues anymore. That's the problem.
Right.
But we're not looking to use it in any way to, you know, to get people excited. People are excited in a positive way for it, okay? And they're calling you, and they're calling all of us the same thing, to share their opinions. We want that to happen.
Right.
Okay, so you're, just so you know where we're coming from.
And I appreciate that, but the same people would be very upset if we let go all our trash collectors to fund the all-day kindergarten.
I agree.
I mean, we're all in a tough situation, as long as we stay vocal and work together to try to come up with what's best at the most minimum impact to the community. I think that's good.
If I could say something about, are there areas to cut? You've got to realize this budget was a 5-4 vote, and I still think there are areas to cut. 12-month secretaries, I don't know if we really still need 12-month secretaries. JFK's sports expansion, I don't know if we still need that. The iPads, I don't know if we need that many iPads. The Writing Program, I didn't realize, I thought our test scores were going up. I didn't know we were, you know, what the word, Dr. Schuman used, having such a poor Writing Program. The Great Books, the 180 new literature titles, I think those are some areas that give us some wiggle room. And when you just add those up, that's $411,000. There's your kindergarten geez in there.
And then there was, and it's a rumor, but what happens to Head Start? Is Head Start going to be eliminated? Because that's a state program, right?
Federal program. My understanding is they would cut 5% in the sequester, if I'm not mistaken, or somewhere around there?
Yeah, I think that's even going down a little bit. They believe right now, at the current level of the sequester, they're going to be able to do some creative things and keep all their classrooms open. When we first heard it was going to be around 8%, they were thinking about closing down the two classrooms. It looks like they're going to be able to do some creative things and keep operating at full capacity.
Because I think Head Start was a good program.
It is a good program.
We agree.
That's all I have. And thank you for putting together the budget so we could go over it, and I know it was hard, but we appreciate it.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Red?
Do we have kindergarten in all the elementary schools now?
We have four schools in town that have kindergarten. All of them, because when the reorganization was done, we had four kindergarten through grade two schools. And they operate half-day kindergartens, all except for one classroom at Barnard. Barnard has one full-day kindergarten. And that's to allow opportunities for the open-student demand, because they only come to a location with this full-day kindergarten.
So if you go to all-day kindergarten, do you go to all schools or stay with the same four?
Every child in the town would be available, could come for all-day kindergarten.
In the four schools, yes.
In the four schools.
In the four schools. Yes.
Now, do you have any idea what the class size will be now?
Right now, it's running from 16 to 18. When we go to all-day kindergarten under this plan, it'd be 20 and 21.
That's very, that's below the state average.
It's above.
That's below the state average. State average, I think, is 23, 24.
23.
23.
23. So we're still below the state average. But again, that number is a high number. We're planning ahead, we're expecting, realistically, probably fewer, but that's, that's the worst case scenario.
I just want to understand.
That's why, that's why I'm telling you.
I have several questions here on the difference. Now, I'm talking, like, how you have a split in the morning and afternoon in all four schools?
Correct.
And you'll go away with that one all-day.
Correct. Well, so there are some full days. Only one.
One. And those in the schools, what, Martha's Court?
Yes, correct. Half of them do. Yeah. But then, you also save some money on busing on that as well, because we're doing multiple busing runs to do half-day kindergarten there.
Well, there was my next question, I probably need to put, are you going to have more buses all around town to get into kindergarten?
It'll be, it won't be more expensive, it'll be about the same. We've talked to the bus company. The only thing we do is, you know, we make sure that we bus kindergarteners door-to-door, so there would be, we would just have to look at the bus runs. But we're not anticipating an increase in busing. We're also not anticipating any real significant savings in busing. We're hoping that it just stays flat.
All set? Thanks, Fred. We've got Carol, Greg, Bill.
I thank you for the detailed budget. I'm going to apologize, because I'm going to go page by page, because I only got this Friday, and I scanned it very quickly. Next year, if we could have the detailed budget a little before this meeting, so we actually have some time to review it, that would be really helpful. But thank you for getting it to us and complying with the town charter. I'm going to flip, because I just scribbled notes as I scanned. I know I'm going to have a ton more questions, so bear with me. On page 13 of your budget, I'm starting from the back going forward here. And, let's see, I believe it's in tuition, magnet schools, vocational schools, you kind of touched on it a little bit. You're jumping up $300,000, and is that in anticipation that we're going to lose that many students, that you're actually bumping that up by?
Which document are you using? The one we gave you on Friday or the?
The detailed document that you gave us Friday.
The one that starts at page 75.
It's 13 in the back detail.
Yeah.
What looks like this.
Gotcha, okay.
It's like, it's a little easier to.
By 13 was a blank, so that's why.
Yeah.
The slides had that special ed increase was 320 to magnet schools.
Yeah.
That was that slide, yeah, the $320,000 was the.
So is that, that increase of the 310 or 20, is that in anticipation of losing more students or?
Or is that the special ed?
Yeah, if you could get me an answer on that one. Is your financial person here?
He is here, yes. I don't know if he has those answers off the top of his head. You're looking on page 13.
13 in the detailed budget.
Yeah, this is the identical, with the FTEs. Which was the line item you were looking at there?
35, 610.
Yep, yep, yep.
Which line item?
From the actual.
First on the bottom.
Okay, so.
Tuition magnet school.
From the actual 2012 expenditure to the proposed 2014.
Counselor, just for one second. Mr. Littizio, our chief financial officer is here. What I've asked him to do is to write down all these questions. We'll put together in some kind of a packet and get it out to all the counselors and the board, because I don't know if he has his computer with all that detail here this evening.
Okay, all right, that's one. On our page 12 of the detailed budget, 511-200, chief information officer IT salary. We've got no expenditure this year. We've got an approved of 55 for 2013, and then it jumps another $100,000 in the proposed. Can you tell us what that is for?
Yes, over the course of the, this particularly calendar, budget year, we inherited, and much to our appreciation, from the IT department, one of the employees. So we have an onsite IT person, and so we're absorbing that in funds from somewhere else in our budget, but next year, we've moved it to the appropriate location. So we now have the chief information officer and one other person doing the IT work. We also know that there's going to be an expanded need for a lot of the technology things that we have to do because of the state mandates, so we built in for a part-time person there as well, or for some other type of work.
So it's for additional personnel. Your first question is answered in the back, 39 on the footnotes. It's anticipation of the loss of students.
Right, okay. And, let's see, on my page nine, hair professionals, 511-500, from the 12, 19, 310 up to the 15, 07, up to the fifteen-oh-seven-eight-five-nine. It's quite a big jump. Do we know what that's for?
No.
Say that word again.
It's number five-eleven-five-hundred, so five-one-one-five-zero-zero.
Special ed paraprofessionals.
Special ed, correct.
Paraprofessionals, yeah. From the actual, the actual expenditure to, this year, you've got, you know, one million two hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and ten, up to one million five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine. That's, that's.
Okay. Okay, so that's the sped period. Okay, we'll look at that.
Okay. And, I've got a ton of notes on the schools themselves that you sent through, that I'll email, because I've got them as I go through the schools, rather than ask you all the questions.
Counselor, if you'd please send those to me and I'll make sure I get them to the right people. Our department will put the report for you.
Okay, all right. And then, the, on the, on the busing, and I, I'm gonna have to look through the budget here to find where you have it. But, there was, there is an increase in, in the, in the budget for busing. And I'm just curious to, to know if you guys went out to bid this year for the busing?
No.
No?
We did not go out to bid. I will tell you, though, from the district I came from, we ran our own buses, and I'm not sure we saved a whole lot of money, but we certainly had a lot of headaches. I've worked with Mr. Smith now for nine months, and, and he's fantastic. I'm not sure we can do better. It's always possible, but, you know, if we need something, he takes care of it. Oftentimes, he does it without charging us. So, there's a lot of things that we get gratis from Smith Bus that I'm sure a new, new vendor may, may charge us for. We did not go out and look for anybody new this year. We were getting great service.
When the second year of the contract?
Please, free your contract.
Yeah. One more year on the contract. Actually, Tom, we did that.
Yeah, we did that.
His rates are very good.
He's the safest busing company in Connecticut.
Yes.
And he treats us really, really well. He's a good partner with the school system. I mean, there's no, there's, he, he is a lot for us.
So, the increase in the busing is due to?
A lot of it's due to the reorganization. We had that hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar increase the first year, just in busing. And that's, that's a price that we have to pay for the reorg, is that we do pay more for busing.
Carol, if you, if you find that spot, if you could just ship that, we'll get, we'll get a definitive answer for you.
Okay. And then, on the healthcare portion, on page sixty-seven of seventy-three, it's, it's a little confusing. Is this, you've got an approved budget dollar figure for twenty-thirteen, and then you actually have a decrease to the proposed?
That's, that's noted, because in that, that's where the nutrition pays for theirs. If you can find it in the detailed budget, you'll see Tony's footnote, that when we get. Instead of showing it as an, like, it looks like an income or, or a reduction of the hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. They've included it in the benefits. Where it belongs, because it's a reimbursement.
Under the footnotes, yeah, I saw. And then, on the, on page sixty-three, under new equipment, it's line five-seven-three-zero-zero-zero. What, what exactly is new equipment? What is that?
That would be the IT.
Exactly, it's also footnote.
iPads. That's actually, page thirteen of the detailed budget, because the footnotes on the side are really helpful.
Hundred thousand for the iPads.
So, that's for the iPads?
That's it, that's for the iPad.
Yeah, the iPads.
Okay, thank you. And then, on the individual schools, I'll just email you, if that's okay?
That'd be great.
Rather than take it school by school, because I've got notes on almost all of them, which I can get you. That's okay.
And we'll get it back to everybody.
Okay.
If, if anybody has questions, please get them directly to Jeff, and then he'll get the answers back to you.
To all of us.
Anybody, just send right to Jeff, it goes to the person, and ask.
Right, he'll blanket email back the whole house. So, that way, ten of us don't have to send them an email.
But I'll take that email.
Thank you. I do, just one more, one more quick one. Under page sixty, seventy-three, the line item five-six-one-three-zero-zero. This goes to, I think, what Tom was talking about. So, you've got an approved line item for this year of eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and then you jumped up to the one million eight hundred and thirty-one.
Is that the IT?
Yeah.
What is it under? Technology, supply materials. It says Town of Enfield, so.
That's the IT increase.
That's the IT, and that's that differential of prepaying. You know, we prepaid one year, and then, we're not able to prepay the next year due to, you know, increases in everything else.
Okay, so the money that you took out this past year to give us ahead of time, this, this year, you're putting it into your budget?
This year it's in?
Because you're anticipating not having that money.
Correct. The anticipation is, does not exist.
It was a one-time, a one-time payment, and that's all, we got it for, part of it was, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand for the previous year from that was taken. And then, we saved one percent in our.
At the end of last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys a lot of stuff.
All the grants drying up is just.
Tom, just, how much is the payroll IT as, I can't, I can't reach your.
Opposed to equipment.
As what?
As opposed to equipment.
As opposed to equipment, so, I guess that would be a question you could get the answer to us at a later date, because I think that's gonna need some figuring out.
Are you looking at the salaries, Tom?
IT?
In the increase in IT, how much of it is going to new positions as opposed to equipment?
The running, the, I don't.
It's all equipment?
Well, no, there was, there was.
The services, the services too, and he was talking about.
There was a new position.
One, one position was transferred over from the, from the town, so that salary went with it. And so, and, and Guy is the other, the other person there. And then, I think they were talking about either buying services or buying some part-time people. So, I mean, we, we can get an answer, I'm trying to clear what you're looking for, so we can get your answer.
That's a separate line item, though, correct? From what I think you guys were asking? I might be wrong.
Are you asking about the IT budget itself, or what they have contained within the IT?
I think what Tom's, well, you, you can say.
Yeah, inside that increase that Carol just talked about, is, is it all equipment?
No, actually, the.
Or is it service, or is it payroll?
What, so that, that increase from the current year to, to projected for next year is not necessarily an increase in the cost of IT. It's the increase in what, you know, or it's a lack of the one-time funding in next year's budget versus this year's budget. So, when you look at, at the IT budget, you'll see, I think, about three hundred thousand difference between the current year and next year's budget. That's, that's a portion of what that increase is, but it's not all nine hundred thousand or whatever the number of the day of the budget. But that is broken down within the budget you receive from me. And when we get to the IT department during the, the budget discussions, you'll see the full breakdown of, of town versus the board.
Anything else, Carol?
No, I'll just, I'll just forward on.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? One more quick one.
Go ahead.
Just because I didn't, like I said, I think I'll through this in great detail. The cafeteria fund, where is it referenced in the budget book? And the athletic fund? That's in here, right? Because I know we asked for that to be included in the budget.
It should be in the sports.
It is in your, I, I don't know which page it's on, we'll find it, get.
PE and health. It's on, it's on page eight.
Page eight of our detailed budget?
Wait, that's P, no, that's PE, that's the regular school one. It's gotta be in the, the sports one and athletics.
When you say sports, are you talking about the student activity fund?
Yeah, yeah, the student activity fund.
And the cafeteria fund.
And, yes.
You're, you're talking about the revenues?
Right.
Of, of, okay.
That's in the, that's the thing we refer to as why the benefits went down. You're looking at the hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that we normally get from the cafeteria fund? Or her budget?
I think.
For equipment? What, which one are you looking for?
Her, the cafeteria fund budget? Food, food service, what do you get?
Food services, you wanna look, okay, that's, all right. You wanna look at what she holds aside her three months that she holds in reserve for equipment?
Yeah, and the ath, and, and the athletic one.
Athletic should be in here.
Outside?
Outside.
Carol, are you asking, activity fund or athletic fund?
Athletic fund.
The athletic fund.
Two different things, but they.
Like, like money from a football game or basketball game?
That's what I'm looking for, okay. We'll get that to you, Carol.
Looking for Barry Bernstein's budget.
That's it.
Yeah, it's in there.
I'm sorry? Yes, Carol?
Yes, yes.
Greg, you're next.
Thank you for, for being here tonight and presenting the budget and everything, and been on your side, so I know what you said, so. Carol, I actually asked a couple of questions in the line items, so I'm looking for the answers on those. And, along with my other counterparts here, we've all heard from our constituents that full-day kindergarten is a priority. And, and I'm just hoping that that comes to fruition, because I've been an advocate for it, been in, for many years, and I'm looking forward to seeing it implemented. And I compliment this, when we looked at it, the price tag was about seven hundred thousand, and that was four years ago. And if you have it where you are, Chris Presnick, I think he's back there, great job, we know he did a good job. So, she asked by the questions, like, one thing I came to the thought of.
Yeah, that's just.
Have we given any consideration to be able to try to, to save some money, so we can pay for some of these things? We know you got the one point two, the governor shifted, and, and those things there. But for instance, with the, with the consolidation of high schools, we know now the voters have voted for it. Have we began to implement plans to be able to do things that we can currently do now to, to consolidate? For instance, and I, there may be many areas, but I'll throw out one. Department heads for, for departments, instead of having department heads of both, both high schools, is, is there a possibility, as we go into the new years and stuff, to begin to one department head for, for secondary high school education? Because in those areas there, it just seems wise to me, the things that we can consolidate in these areas, it seems wise to do it now, so that way, we can fund some of the stuff that we're finding we need, and some stuff that's being, you know, mandated from the state. For instance, sports and stuff like that, there's some things we've already done, and I know you've done, and you had your late work with the mascot and the colors and stuff, and those things are vital, I know. But have we given considerations to, now that we know the voters said yes, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't start the mechanism to begin to draw in and make it one high school community and two campuses in that transition period, to find the cost savings with these higher areas of, of leadership, such as the, the, what do you call, the department heads? So, something like that. Has that been talked about?
I think we're looking at any possible savings we can get. And, and, and part, part of the problem right now is that we don't know what our numbers are. We're still scheduling, okay? With, you know, you know the tallies and, in terms of looking at that and see what our needs are for next year. So, we're certainly looking at that closely at the secondary level. Second thing, in terms of department chairs, one of the ways we're getting out of this issue of having the seven vice principals of the elementary school, is that we cut those and we put, we do, we're doing the three secondary schools, and personnel who are gonna do that are the department chairs. Because otherwise, we'd be looking for some additional people to carry out that program. So, to get us through this, this next year, where we have to do this one-third of the, of the district, we're gonna, we're gonna be using the department chairs to do that. The other piece with it, some of those are contractual issues, and, but to answer your question, we're looking at any savings that we can get to try and do that. And, 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 you know, we're not done yet. Like you, we've been caught up in a lot of other issues that we're dealing with right now. We need to get back to the business of, of, of looking at the budget a little more closely as we look forward.
And, and one more question, the excess cost, where's, where's that held at? Where's, what's the status on that? Where, last I remember, when I was chairman of the board, we, we had a, a range of worked out. And where is that at? How much is that expected, you know, for special ed, the excess cost?
We're making an assumption at seventy percent.
Okay. And hasn't, because I knew that we were worried it was gonna drop to fifty and whatever it's gonna do, so.
We, we made a budgetary assumption when we put this all together at seventy percent funding.
And have you already budgeted that money into your budget?
We planned for that, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. Next is Bill.
Thank you for the, for the document, and, like, like Carol, I plan to start sifting through it in some more detail. But a, a couple of questions from, from just the presentation tonight, in frankly, no particular order. The expansion of the iPads, is that, and I'll look at Guy too, is, is that device specific on the Apple product at this point? Or have, have there been evaluations of other tablet devices ongoing? And what, what is the specific need? Is it a tablet, or are we all full bore on iPad as a district?
In this district, to the best of my knowledge, we have not done a comparison. I did do one in my previous district. I believe that the iPad is, is the best device for us right now, but we certainly could explore other things. I, I wanna be, really of getting too many different platforms out there. And we've had great success so far with the first three hundred iPads. I would like to continue in that direction.
Maybe for the sake of everyone at home, I mean, can you give us a sense for what they're being used for, or how they're being leveraged in the classroom?
Yes, one of the, the teachers actually came in to do a nice presentation for the board about a month ago, how they're being used in mathematics at the high school level. And they're, they're being used in a, in a couple of different ways. One of which is that the, the students are able to do their work there and then move things up onto the, onto the screen, and, and work can be viewed all at once. Class can work through a lot of problems, where everyone can see how things are doing it. One of the things I've seen at the elementary schools, when I've visited classrooms, is students being allowed to either do reading or mathematics individually, while the teacher goes around and checks and can work individually, one-on-one. But the, the students can go through a various set of routines, which keeps them learning on their own, independently, at their own pace, while the teacher can utilize the, the time to work individually with students who are struggling.
What's going on in district when it comes to identifying textbooks and whether or not they're device-ready? Is there, is that still a, a challenge? Or have we begun to acquire materials that are, are made specifically for a town?
Across the nation, that's still in its infancy. But just as you can imagine, you're all aware of the, the companies in California and Texas that are hugely invested in textbook and make a lot of money and drive that. They are also the ones who are developing the online textbooks. So, the, the licenses that we'll be buying will probably be from those same very companies. And so, we're, we're investigating that and deciding how we can move to it. I think we all believe that at some point, the devices will replace the paper, but it will be a shift over, and I'm sure that the huge publishing companies will have their, their stamp all over that.
Okay. It was interesting to see the numbers tonight, how special ed categories are, are substantially more costly next year. This is just out of complete curiosity. Has anyone looked into whether or not certain therapies that become part of a special ed program might qualify for reimbursement by insurance agents, insurance companies on the healthcare side, or even the new federal healthcare mandate? When you say something like occupational therapy? If, I mean, if Joey was, needed occupational therapy, he would seek reimbursement. Is that ever something that's been looked at or studied in the new, in the new law?
It's something I've been looking at for some time now, but as far as the state goes, now, everything that is covered under special education falls under the Board of Education budget, and that's the way the law's written. And that, any of the factors that I think on the federal side, with no childletting eye, even though there's a labor force in place in Connecticut.
All right. Thank you.
We do, we do collect Medicaid money. Okay, I'm gonna say that we, we have a secretary that works to get any Medicaid money they can for any services that they're applying, that, that qualify for that. And I believe they're collecting a hundred thousand dollars, the number that, that's stuck in my mind. I'm sure we can find a number for you, because we've talked about that at our meetings. And, and we've aggressively, we've aggressively gone after that money, any, any money that we can get that is reimbursable.
Okay.
Okay, and that secretary, that's a large part of her job, is just doing that.
Great. I'll have to hear it.
There's a question I, I answered, General. There is some, there is, I said, there's some Medicaid money that comes in, but compared There is some, there is some Medicaid money that comes in, but compared to the rest of the budget, these you see.
Okay. Third question. Just being aware of folks at Crec and actually working with them in my own line of work, I've been aware that they've actually marketed kind of the data warehousing and data analysis services for member communities for quite some time. Has Enfield looked at that program seriously or issued specifications to them for what we're attempting to achieve here in the next few years?
Our chief academic officer actually came from Crec and is well aware of that facility. We've also talked to Dr. Ellsworth, who is the psychometrician down there at Crec. We could purchase their services. I think we can do it in-house, less expensive.
Okay. And lastly, this one might be more of a conversation starter than a question. The whole idea of Common Core and really developing a nationwide cookie-cutter approach to education worries me. And I've kind of looked at the whole worldwide initiative with some skepticism. I think we, as a community and we as parents, end up giving up a lot of the freedom that we seek in creating and managing a local school board and in creating curriculum that fits our community, perhaps better than one in Kansas or in California or in Taiwan. So I'm just curious how much, how much the board has worked on really understanding the strings that come with the Common Core initiative? And why we're making some large-scale investments right out of the chute, when it seems to me, and I could be wrong in it, but it seems to me that if the state of Connecticut's only now just starting to understand how it's rolling out the standards, and I've been looking at some stuff that was presented in December of last year. So it's still fairly new in terms of how they're administering the standards. What is it about the investments that we're making in this budget that would position it as critical needs for Enfield?
First of all, the new assessments that our students will take in 2015 will be based on the Common Core curriculum. So we will, if we're gonna prepare our students for those assessments, we're gonna have to start to do that work in the next school year, which is why we've put in a few things in place. In terms of the Common Core and the board, the Common Core is a very complicated implementation process. The board has received some information from our chief academic officer, both in her Saturday morning retreat, when she spends some time with them, and also in a couple of our board meetings going through it. But nevertheless, it's complex, it's evolving, as you said, it's in its infancy. We're not really sure what it's gonna look like or what it's gonna be, except we do know it's coming. And we do know the assessments in 2015 are gonna be closely tied to it.
Okay. Well, maybe this has an opinion, then, my own personal opinion, that, you know, in terms of how the board prioritizes whatever money it gets, you know, until we fully understand the strings that come with those mandates from the state, I would rank some of those investments as lower priority than some of the other things you've identified in your budget. The last thing I want to do, or I want to see Enfield do, is give up its academic freedom in the way that it allows teachers to teach and be creative in the classroom.
We gave that up a long time ago.
We very, very did. I hear you. But, you know, just because the tests are changing to someone else's new standard doesn't mean, you know, reading and writing ought to change along with it.
Since Councilman Lee brought up the conversation. I think with the 20 years, you're not gonna see too many local boards of education.
Well, that, the conversation started.
With all the strings that are attached, and everything is going on, and the fact that education is now a big business, not local.
Always been a big business.
It's changing fast.
Since Councilman Lee does bring up the conversation. I share your beliefs about the Common Core. I share your beliefs about the steerage from the state to turn us into a regionalized school system, which will eventually turn into a state school system. And much like our budgetary woes, its origins are here at the state level. Again, we are being short-changed as a Board of Education by anywhere between 11 and 14 million dollars. And we're getting more mandates pushed out upon us. You have been short-changed by the state, because all of your private funding and everything that you normally get accredited to you has been taken from you and reattributed. But there is definitely, it's hard not to see a push towards regionalization, not just regionalism, although to me, it's the same. And you're not gonna see a local Board of Education for very much longer. And I wonder what's had been fighting against it for, since I sat on the board, so. You're not alone.
Anyone else want to expand on Councilman Lee's?
Conversation.
Since Councilman Lee said everything I wanted to say, no.
All right. Looks like everyone that had their hand up, you got another question?
I got just a quick, quick one. General liability insurance, is there a reason why that went up 72,000 this year? Do we have an idea why that jumped? Page 72 of 73 in my book.
I guess I have to look at the detail ones.
It says anticipated increase into experiences.
I do know that Kerme has, in their projection, had passed on that we're looking at about a 15% increase overall on our liability. So I don't know how those numbers break down, but I know we are looking at a 15% increase.
Okay.
That's.
That's if we, if we.
70, 80, 90.
That's if we stay with the number this year.
Correct. Yep.
How many providers are there?
Just a parting comment. You know, with all the good people in this room that are trying to do the right thing, this, my short career is a monumental task, between what the state has cost us on, you know, 2.7 million on the town side, thereabouts, not including the car tax thing, if that happens, what you guys are looking for, and the mandates, and all the things we need to do to keep our town prospering, from a business community to education, to just living in the services that we're used to. We gotta go out in this discussion and find $5.5 billion. That's really what it comes down to. So I hope nobody takes the discussion personally, because we're all in it for the same thing. And wish us luck.
If I do say, I think we're all looking for the same thing. You're correct, Tom. And I think we're gonna put our heads down and try to charm our council to do whatever we can do. None of us, that was part of the problem, putting this together, none of us are sure of what's going to happen with the state budget. I mean, you guys are talking to legislators, so were we. And there are people telling us, no way, heck, is the car tax going through. Certain things aren't gonna go through that have been popping up. You know, the pilot stuff is out, I don't know how that's gonna eventually play out. So part of it is, we're waiting to see what you're actually going to agree to. I don't believe that what's there today is what we're gonna see in May. I don't think any of you, it'll change somehow. And we've gotta adjust where we are to that. But I think we're all cognizant of the job that you've got. We're sitting down presenting what we think are the needs of the district. I think we read on a lot of them, we just have to figure out some way to get to it. You know, we're not in a hot city, we're not giving each other, it's not about that. We're all in the same boat here. But we gotta figure out our way around it. So whatever we can do to help you, you're making a decision, you need data, get to us. I'd rather use the right data than question about what it is. You need it, we'll get it for you. Whatever you need, we'll get it for you. And there's no stupid questions in this thing, okay? And we want to work with you. We want to get to the same things that you want. And I think let's work hand in hand, see if we can do it.
All right, I got a couple of questions. Everyone was packing and rustling their papers, but I haven't gone yet. First of all, and not recognized. What'd you say to me? First of all, I know, because we worked in our governance, and I appreciate the line item and the detailed budget and the explanations that are written in. So this is a huge step over what previous administrations were able to produce for the board, as well as the town council. So, and it's a good read, and I haven't gone through the whole thing, but it's very appreciated.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to compliment Mr. Letizio. I know he spent a lot of hours on nights and weekends, a lot of times in the last months, he's been the last one to leave the building at night. And I know he's come back after dinner and works in long hours, so we appreciate the effort he's put in to produce that for you.
Thank you. And here's, I gotta flip through your presentation, but on the top map, one of my questions is, can you quantify for us what the town's contribution to education is within the town budget?
In total?
In total. So, you know, not what's in here in the Board of Education budget, but.
Take the grants out?
Over and above, yeah, the dollars that we spend on our side of the budget.
Taxpayer dollar.
To contribute to education. So I'm sure there's some number somewhere that you can throw together.
The general.
Town, town side expenditures that are directly related to education.
Gotcha. Yep, we put that together.
So, whether you want to say, you know, buildings and grounds.
Right.
And all of those.
Okay.
You know, not an SRO or school security, but general support of education.
Would that be accompanied with that?
I believe, I believe the percentage is a little over 60%.
No, he's, he's.
Yeah, I wasn't clear until you said what you said.
The dollar amount on the town side of the budget that is directly related to education.
For instance, just, you know, custodial maintenance.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
What about CIP?
Can be, it's, can be CIP. So it's more, because a lot of communities that you see, now's the time where we start, you read an article and you start comparing budgets. And you said, okay, well, in Enfield, it's 60-40, but in Simsbury, it's, you know, 70-30. Why? Well, there's a lot that's within, over, that we've joined together, and we've done these moves together, where the physical dollars reside on the town side.
Yeah. Typically, we, in the document that we produced for the public hearing, it has a page in there, it talks about the town provided. And I know the assistant town manager is working on that document, so.
Okay. And then on the presentation, the, the first was, on the IT fund, and I think Tom hit on.
What page?
Your page number seven of your, of this. Just the IT fund, last year funded by unspent funds, we transferred it in, we came to an agreement. I noticed somewhere in the book here, I believe you have, budgeted $150,000 as a return. Correct? So you're anticipating to save 150, but I believe you're asking the council to then return those funds in the next, so from this fiscal year, similar to what we've done. So that 150 number is what you have budgeted?
Yes.
Correct? How are your projections running now? Because I know you've worked on this, and time goes by. Is that 150 still a good number? Or are you starting to see it erode away? Savings, is it, or is that the number we really should be working with, is the 150?
The 150 is a very solid number right now. In addition, the board has allocated up to $125,000 for the state mandated on teacher evaluation. So the 275 number is still very solid. The finance committee looks at it every month, but we feel very confident that we can do both.
Okay. And that would require council action, similar to what we did in the ultimate resolution at budget time, to say, what is unspent?
Let's go back to it.
Would go back in, and that's for council to.
Are we gonna put towards the IT budget?
For the IT, yeah.
I think that's what we did.
The IT works fine.
Yeah, you don't care.
It's a matter of going, because, you know, yeah, that, it's cleaner. I think we decided it was cleaner to do the IT.
Right.
Okay. Also, keep in mind, the 125 received was unbudgeted for us. That was imposed, that was an unfunded mandate, we had to do it, and so we saved the money out of this year's budget.
Second question, and on the special ed, going up $610,000 this year? Or actually, yes, it is, $610,000. What is the total dollar amount of special ed in your budget?
10 million.
Or that can be part of your.
We can get the answer, we can definitely get the answer, too. Yeah.
It's 10 or 11.
It's 10.7. It's on the page.
It's all special ed.
It's all special ed.
Yeah.
The answer actually is.
It says in the packet that you, yes?
Yes.
It's a half packet, it's special.
10.7. It's page nine.
Okay.
Page nine in the back.
Page nine, okay. And that, then that, that dollar amount really affects about, and I'm doing quick math, about 1,200 students out of your 6,000-something.
5,000, yeah.
5,000-something. So it's a big, it's a big chunk of money, and you all know it. That was more from the camera.
No control over it.
And no control over it.
Same thing goes with the magnet school tuition, because that's totally, you can see those numbers going up. That's totally out of our control. And we can do it, we can do it cheaper here, and we think better than what they're doing.
And on the presentation, just want to clarify, because it actually is different on two pages. On page 10, the iPad consortium, two, $100,000. And I, my notes said 200 iPads.
Correct.
And then on page 12, the last, second to last slide, it says 100 new iPads. So that should be 200.
It's 200,000.
Great.
100,000, 200 iPads.
Got it. So that 100 is 100K for new iPads.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Excellent math skills, Mayor.
Well, I went down to public schools, but math was down by strong.
They had tablets, they called them rocks.
Very good. Advocuses, right? All right. That was, those, those are my questions. So thank you very much. Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
So we have, before we do that, so we have a budget community conversation that the board members are welcome to attend, and that's Wednesday, April 3rd, 7:00 p.m. Have we set a location yet, Matt?
I'm not sure if they got a location for that.
Okay.
What's the date of the other one? Is it April 24th?
April 3rd and then April 24th is the charter public hearing at Enfield High School at 7:00 o'clock. So I know a lot, at least I've been getting a lot of feedback from residents that there seems to be a higher degree of interest in the community conversation, with folks wanting to come out and talk about full-day kindergarten. And I'm trying to steer people to the community conversation, because we can actually have that back-and-forth dialogue versus looking straight-faced up during the budget public hearing and not being able to respond back.
I agree with you on that.
But we want to find an appropriate location where there's plenty of parking in case people actually want to come out and participate, more than the five parents that showed up last year, so.
In Scott for the record, there's a lovely shirt.
You know, when you walked in council chambers, I said, there is no way Peter Genitis and I have the same shirt. It's close.
It's close.
It's not the same.
Except Peter's is a lot bigger.
All right. Motion by Derek Carr Nelson, seconded by Carol, all those in favor?
Aye.